Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Called the council meeting for 7:00 PM Thursday, June the 12th to Water. This meeting is being broadcast live on local cable channel thirteen zero three and streamed online at www.buxportmain.gov by clicking Watch Meetings under Town Council section. Questions or comments may be submitted during the meeting by emailing slassard@buxportmain.gov or by calling two zero seven three zero seven eight zero three zero during the meeting. I was hoping I wouldn't have to give the same speech, but we have a lot of new faces here tonight. This is a great time, if you have an electronic device, to silence it. If you are going to speak this evening, I would ask that you come to the podium and state your name, as well as if you're not from Bucksport, where you are from. And just a reminder, if you haven't been here in a while, or have never been here, if you whisper to the person next to you, I can almost guarantee that it will be picked up by the microphones and put out over the internet. So, just something to be cognizant of. I think I've covered everything. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Eastman?
Here.
Counselor Tarian?
Here.
Counselor Hare?
Here.
Mayor Visonette?
Here.
Counselor Rabs?
Here.
Counselor Bishop?
He is in the gus.
Counselor Rankin?
Here.
Thank you, Jacob. I did have another housekeeping item that I wanted to mention before we get rolling. I know a number of you are here for things that might be at or toward the beginning of the agenda. If you would like to leave once those things are completed, that is fine. As you can see, we have plenty of folks here tonight, so. The first is the swearing-in of Officer Trevor Luna.
Hope he's not scared of the crowd.
I hope not. He's got friends with him. He's armed, he shouldn't be.
They're getting younger and younger every year.
It's a cheat sheet right here if you need it. Counsel, have you raised your right hand?
Okay.
Repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Trevor Luna.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
That I will, in all respects.
And I will, of all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of patrol officer.
Of patrol officer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would just like to note that Officer Luna is the last police officer hired during my tenure as town manager. And it has been my practice since I've been here to attend the graduations of all the officers, including Axel, that have been hired during my time. So, I have made a request to Deputy Chief Winchester just to let me know when your graduation is, because I would like to attend, and I am confident that you will make it through successfully.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Welcome aboard, Officer.
Thank you. Alright.
Next, we have the recognition of Patricia Pat Smith Ranzoni as our poet laureate.
Good evening, everyone. I'm thrilled that there are so many people here. I'm honored to be part of this occasion and tremendously sad to be part of it as well. I have some remarks. Some counselors have some things that they would like to say. And then I did the one thing that I could think of that Pat would appreciate the most. I wrote a poem for her. And you have to understand that I am not a poet. Pat is a poet. I am a... I'm a poser. I write, but I don't have talent. But I have heart, so it's from the heart. I'm gonna make a few remarks and then the counselors will have some. As poet laureate for the Town of Bucksport, Pat has kept alive a love for words, fostered a strong sense of community, and never shied away from tough subjects. She has done yeoman's work to keep alive the history of this town and the people who created that history. She has memorialized both the highs and the lows of the mill years in her work, Still Mill, and has been a driving force behind the paper-making museum that is in progress at the former mill site. Although Pat's appointment as poet laureate was for life, she has chosen at this time to step down. This decision will leave a big hole in the fabric of Bucksport, but we are so fortunate that her writings are being memorialized, both locally and at the state level. Pat is a master at wielding the power of words in her poetry and in her writings. There are no excess words with Pat. And each of her works has the ability to evoke a wide variety of emotions. I have both laughed and cried while reading Pat's works. She was awarded the Spirit of America Award from the Town of Bucksport in recognition of work on behalf of the town. And tonight, we honor her with a bouquet of flowers and our most sincere thanks. All we can say is thank you. Thank you from a grateful community for loving Bucksport so much. Thank you for putting your heart and soul into saving its history. And thank you for gracing us with your presence and your words.
Who wants to be first?
Please.
I just, Pat, I just have always appreciated you putting our hearts to the written word. I just can't say much more than what Sue said, but just really grateful to have met you and grateful that we got you as our poet laureate. So, thank you for everything that you've written and felt and shared with this community and will continue to share, I'm sure, in a different capacity.
Just real briefly, I'll try to be as brief as I possibly can. Sometimes it's a struggle, but I am not a poet either. And I... Not even the level of our town manager. But I am gonna plagiarize for a moment. I'm gonna quote from one of your poems. One that I like and one that I think can apply. I'm gonna read towards the end of it. It's the poem Touchstone. And it's the last few lines. "Touch this gritted and touch spirit. Heart, sweat, ground of the people of the dawn. In its shape or forever, touch this stone and feel creation. Before the wind, touch this stone and be touched." Pat, I think that applies to you as well. But I think of it anytime I pick up a rock on the coast of Maine, or even a lake. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time here. And in my head, anyway, you will be poet laureate, emeritus. And we appreciate everything you've done. I can't do better than what the town manager has done, so, thank you.
Okay, Pat, these flowers are for you. And they have a box that they go in so that they can go home in the car without doing what mine would have done coming from Bangor this morning, which is... Well, I've lost the box. There's a box. Oh!
I think it's on the cart.
It's on the cart.
It's on the cart, so we'll do it. It just sits down in there so that it can go home in a car without... Without tipping over. So, if you would take those down, Pat, that would be really good. Now, I'm gonna apologize in advance for the fact that I am not... I don't have talent, I have heart. So, this poem is Patricia Smith Ranzoni, Bucksport poet laureate. She is a person who truly pours her soul into every word she writes. All are chosen with the utmost care, and each one has meaning. She is not a woman of wasted words and platitudes, or one for the superficial. There are no smoke and mirrors in her work, and she cares only for what is true. Her values and ethics are the core of her existence. All of her poems and writings run through those filters. And she advocates for what is right, even when it is not popular. Her passion for Bucksport, for its history and its future, bleeds from her very pores. It only takes a conversation to begin to understand her love for this community. She is the first poet laureate for Bucksport and has created very big shoes for whoever follows. The gift over her art, her sense of community, and her legacy will forever be a part of Bucksport. We are blessed to have her as our poet, our conscience, our historian, and our friend. She has fostered a love for history through her art, and she is an inspiration for us all.
I did have something that I'd like to share with you. My heart felt so full when I came through. But I haven't read or recited the poem I have in mind for years. So, I may start, and if I get stuff, you'll understand. Those of you who've lived in the country will know some of these terms. Letting down. You know, the term, you know, the town. Cushy cow, Barney, let down thy milk, and I will give thee a gown of silk. A gown of silk and a silver teat, if thou wilt let down thy milk to me, old milking champ. Let me live with remembrance of teeth in my fists. Let me give in to the privety of a grunsey hive, my temple in the sheco in her sigh. Sweet hair and hugely lonely. Let me blister these barn hands, riding her. This rip, a lost milk, my people are smiling for.
Just...
Please.
Pat, as I prepared this afternoon coming in here, for a minute, I thought that you might be the only municipal poet laureate in the whole state of Maine. Shortly after, I was corrected. It's probably two, three others out there. But as Sue said, you are the fabric of Bucksport. I've always lived here about a decade and a half, and I've always recognized that Ranzoni name and living out there on Bucks Mills Road. And I just wanna say thank you for all of us here in Bucksport. And you may not be the only or last poet laureate in the whole state of Maine, but you are the coolest, so thank you.
I'll second that. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay. I'm certainly not asking anyone to leave, but I will give everybody an opportunity if they would like to...
Oh, there's refreshments. There's goodies by the door if anyone wants. Sweet cheeks on Verona.
Well, now, we're not getting rid of anybody.
You can feel free to get up and...
Yes, please.
Or take some with you, but there's goodies and there's water there.
Thank you.
Please take some goodies, or the council will fight over them.
Yes, even if you don't want a goodie now, but you find you might want one later, just...
They're right there. There's two levels of them.
There you go.
Yes.
I'm just finding my place here, that's all. Alright, now onto much more boring stuff. We do have to consider the minutes of our previous meeting from May the 22nd. I will assume that the council's had a chance to review those. Questions? Those in favor? Pose, if you. We have a number of items, reports, documents, and correspondence. The first is Orland Police Calls from May the 12th, the 17th, and the 27th of 2025. Any questions on those? We have a letter of support from Valerie Silia for hospice of Hancock County. We also have a thank you letter from Down East Community Partners. We have the departmental reports from May. Any questions? We have the report from the Infrastructure and Properties Committee. I'll turn that over to Counselor Hare.
Yes, sir, the Infrastructure and Properties Committee met this evening at 5:30, and so we made a few recommendations to go to council. The first one was the request from the Bucksport United Methodist Church to use the medium triangle. It's being described as, but it's more of a rectangle. For public use, so we recommended the council take that up for discussion. Of course, there'll be more to iron out when that comes to council agenda. The second item on the agenda was to discuss the senior center lease, and we made a recommendation for the council to take that up as well at the next meeting. And the priority docking agreement with American Cruise Line. They wanted to secure spots for season beginning in January. And so, we also made a recommendation that the council take that up for discussion as well and iron out the details. And then we adjourned. Quick meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Counselor? I do want to... Last evening, we received a letter from Citizens Group, their letter to the Maine DEP regarding the Bucksport Mill LLC landfill closure plan. And I do want to acknowledge receipt of that as well. I'm sure we'll be talking about at least portions of that later, or the landfill itself, I mean. Discussion items. I don't have any on the agenda this evening. Do have a public hearing, a public hearing on the general fund, capital improvements, marina, and sewer budgets. I will open the public hearing. Jacob with the presentation, I believe, and then Wes.
Good evening, council. Just very briefly, a presentation over the budget process. I want to thank you for the work that each of you has put into it and also thank our staff for the work that's taken to get to this point. So, very, very briefly, a quick overview of the budget process. The Town of Bucksport, like many communities around us, runs a fiscal year that runs from July 1st to June 30th. The town manager is charged with submitting a budget, along with a budget message, to the town council, and the town council then reviews that, makes any sort of changes that they would like to see, holds a public hearing, which we are doing tonight, and then adopts the budget at least seven days prior to the start of the new fiscal year. And the council has the authority to adjust the budget during the year via transfers, supplements, reductions, or emergency appropriations. So, how did we get here? We started meeting as staff in early February and March, budget meetings with department heads, and we distributed the proposed budget to the council in the beginning of April. We held budget workshops throughout the months of April and May. And tonight, we get towards the finish line of the public hearing and the adoption of the budget. So, what's it looking like? Grand totals before offsets. We see the municipal budget at nine million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, forty-eight dollars. That's an increase of five point nine eight percent. And I do think it's important to note where we started. Where we started was an increase of eleven and a half percent. And so, through meetings with staff, through discussions, through work of the council, we have been able to get that down to five points, just shy of six percent. Our share of the RSU 25 appropriation for the upcoming year is five point six million, which is an increase of seven point eight percent. And our Hancock County tax assessment for this year is three hundred and twenty-two thousand, which is up fourteen percent. And so, that brings the total budget before any sort of revenue offsets at fifteen point one million, which is an overall increase of six point eight four percent. And so, what makes up the municipal portion of that budget? Well, first is public safety at three point two million. And that, of course, is our fire, police, and dispatch services, along with our public safety building. Then we have the general government portion of the budget, which is two point nine million. That's a pretty wide-ranging department. It's the town office, the staff associated with the town office, insurance and benefits. This building, it covers a pretty wide range of items. Then, of course, is Streets and Ways, which is our public works department, at one point one million. Our debt service, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Recreation at four hundred and twenty-four thousand. Our capital improvement plan, three hundred and ten thousand. Health and sanitation, which is primarily our transfer station, three hundred and seven thousand. Community and social agencies budget, sixty-six thousand, and the cemetery budget at twenty-four thousand. And so, what drove this budget? What were the biggest new expenses associated with this budget? We identified five major things. The first is paving at two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Your budget last year, paving was not included, so that's a significant increase in this year's budget. And also wages. Wages, it's important to note that this is a union contract year. This is a negotiations year. And we have been... That certainly is a driver to that line as well. The incorporation of a tan and the interest associated with that, as well as our debt service payments at a hundred thousand. Insurance and benefits, health insurance premiums increasing. The addition of paid family medical leave, the law that was recently passed, that is new to this budget, ninety-two thousand. And the payment on the ambulance is new to this budget. So, that's an additional sixty thousand in this year's budget. So, those five things alone equate to six hundred and seven thousand dollars, which I would add is ninety-two thousand dollars more than the overall increase in this budget. So, I think that's a testament to the reductions that were made in other areas of this budget. Revenues. What makes up our revenues? General government, two point two million. That is where excise tax is. That's where state revenue sharing is, and a number of other factors. The public safety or protection, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. Majority of that is ambulance revenues and other various revenues and subsidies that we receive from the Town of Verona Island and the Town of Orland. Recreation is primarily reimbursements from the RSU for the position that's associated with that. Highway revenues, seventy-five thousand, and transfer station fees under health and sanitation, which gets us to three point... Three point three million in revenues, which you would see is a thirty-five percent reduction. Where that primarily comes from is this slide here. As we have said throughout this process, the town is very fortunate to have significant good fiscal planning ahead of the mill's closure in 2015. And so, for the past ten years, the town has been able to pull from reserves in order to keep taxation low. And those reserves are... That option is no longer with us. And so, there's a loss of one point four million dollars in revenue that is new to this year's budget. So, again, the town has been very fortunate over the past ten years to have that financial planning that was there. But this is the year where that looks different. So, the bottom line. So, as you can see, you add up the total appropriations of the municipal, the school, and the county, and that gets us to fifteen point one million less revenue associated. Less of the revenue offsets of three point three million. That gets us to eleven point seven million dollars to be raised by taxation. And so, where does the tax dollar go? One tax dollar, forty-nine cents of it goes to the town. Forty-eight cents of it goes to education. And three cents of it goes to the county. And to break down that forty-nine cents of the town even further, seventeen cents of that forty-nine cents goes to public safety, sixteen cents to general government, six cents to Streets and Ways or highways, three cents to debt service, three cents to recreation, two cents to health and sanitation, one cent to social agencies, and one cent to cemeteries. So, that wraps up my presentation. Again, I want to thank each of you for your collaboration through this process. Thank our staff and department heads for the hard work that they put into this budget. Certainly, a very difficult budget process to get through, just given some of the circumstances.
Public hearing is open, so I will open it up to the public first. Any comments on the general fund, any of the budgets that are on the agenda for this evening? Anyone from the council want to try to close the?
I just think all departments did an amazing job because we were an extremely demanding council this budget season. In the unknowns of what's going to happen in the future, everyone did an amazing job. Thank, thank every department. Thank you, Jacob. Thank you, Sue.
I would definitely agree.
I would note that the, the budget moving from July 1 forward is, is the future. And Jacob and our finance director, Rachel Wilson, have done the yeoman's work in putting numbers together. I, I have participated in department head meetings and done these things, but this is the budget that will move forward with a new manager. And I can't say how much hard work they put into this and what a great job this whole team has done in, in doing this work. So I appreciate greatly all of their efforts. It has made my last few months here, it's given me a sense of security and knowing that this community will be in very good hands moving forward.
Should we clap?
Just to, this is the most people we've had in this room in quite some time. And over the last few months, there, we listened to each of the department heads stand up here at the podium, and they had had some very difficult conversations this last half year as they went along to arrive at these numbers. And we saw it in their eyes. There wasn't, Sue put it best one night. She said, this isn't a chainsaw they took to us. They went past the chainsaw, they went into a scalpel, and they made very, very precise cuts to get here. This has been very, very difficult. Also, to Sue's points, we are a full services town. When you pick up that phone and you need an ambulance, or a rescue truck, or a fire truck, or whatever, you don't wait for it to go to the county and come back and wait for somebody to drive eighteen miles to get to you. For the first time that I can remember in a long time, our police department is up to full staff now. Our fire department is up to full staff. Our communications is up to full staff. There are no layoffs planned. There are no layoffs at the school this year. I mean, it's, it's, it's such a remarkable accomplishment. I'm not just trying to throw the words out there, but, boy, kudos to these department heads that pulled this off. Very nice job done. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Oh, great commentary. Anyone else? Yeah, just real brief. I won't belabor the point, but I, I made this point at the last meeting. If you haven't been following the process as closely as I say, some of us around this have been. The cuts the department heads made, we, this council ended up adding some of that stuff back into the budget. That doesn't happen very often. I've been involved in local government off and on for decades now, and it's very rare that a council or board will add stuff back in that department heads have already cut. So I, I think that speaks to two things. You had engaged department heads, but you also, I will speak for the council as a whole here, I'll tread lightly, but a very engaged council that is managing, I would hope, managing the future of Bucksport from beyond here, and looking down the road a little bit. So, anyway, I've always believed that budgets reflect priorities, and I'm hopeful that this budget does that. So anyway, I, anyone else? Want to be clear, I'm about to close the public hearing, and then in a moment, we're just going to take action on the budget. So I want to make sure that there's no public comment before I do that. I mean, I'm not going to shut anybody off, but this would be a great time if you had anything to say. Just want to make sure. Okay. We will close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone. We have new ordinances to consider, just one. It's the first reading of, the ordinance amending the town of Bucksport's schedule of fees to adjust the sewer service fees.
Is this, this is the first reading. There will be a second reading and a public hearing at the meeting on June twenty-sixth. The, the last time the sewer rate was increased was two thousand and fifteen. And since that time, the new plant, new, it's now almost nine years old, has come online. And between a combination of reduced service use, which is the fees that are, the amount of, it's based on water readings or, or base rate, uses down as, as technology improves the amount of water that's used in a, in any system from toilets to showers and all those kind of things, that reduction. And then we've had a reduction in some of the users that had formerly been larger users in the system are now smaller users. So the, the, and that combined with the increase in sledge disposal costs, which used to be minimal, is now in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar a year range because of PFAS and the fact that it's no longer able to be disposed of in the way that it used to be. So this is, as I said, there will be a second reading and a public hearing on this at the next meeting, but this is the introduction of the topic. And that, those are the reasons that it's.
Move on to agenda items. The first is resolve 2025-62, adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026, general fund budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions, comments? Alls in favor? Opposed? Resolve 2025-63, adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026, capital improvement program budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or comments? Alls in favor? Resolve 2025-64, adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026, Marina Enterprise Fund budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? Alls in favor? Resolve 2025-65, adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026, sewer enterprise fund budget.
Motion to approve.
Alls in favor? Resolve 2025-67, accepting a two thousand nine hundred thirteen dollar and seven cent Ed McDonald Safety Grant.
Missed one.
I knew I was going to miss one.
You missed, you missed E.
Oh, I did miss E. I apologize for that. Resolve 2025-66, approving a marijuana establishment license for River Rise Incorporated at one fifty-nine U.S. Route 1.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions in a second. Questions or comments? Alls in favor? Opposed? Now, we'll go, accepting, resolve 2025-67, accepting a two thousand nine hundred thirteen dollar and seven cent Ed McDonald Safety Grant from the Maine Municipal Association Workers Compensation Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or comments? Alls in favor? Resolve 2025-68, authorizing the expenditure of CIP funds in the amount of five thousand seventy-five dollars for the repair of ambulance three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or comments? Alls in favor? H. Resolve 2025-69, approval of whole location for Central Main Power Company and CCI on the Silver Lake Road. That was in the package.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Alls in favor? Resolve 2025-70, authorizing the expenditure of CIP funds in the amount of three thousand twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents for police rifle equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Alls in favor? Opposed? I do have a request to take up an item not on the agenda this evening. Entertained a motion to do just that.
Motion to add an item.
Second.
Alls in favor? The motion is to add item, resolve 2025-71, which is to approve the police department CIP request of nine hundred and fifty dollars for cruiser computer equipment. You should have that. That was emailed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Alls in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Now managers report.
Attached to the report to the council and will also be on the town's website is a memo outlining information that was sent to DEP in regard to the closure plan submitted by Bucksport Mill LLC for the landfill. You also have a copy of information that was submitted by the local citizens group to DEP. They will be providing commentary on it this evening under public comment portion of the meeting. I would like to thank the group for all of the time, effort, and energy that they have spent in reviewing the proposed closure plan. The DEP staffer working on the project thanked me today for the submitted comments, indicated that she had referred the technical recommendations to their technical staff, and would be in touch with any questions related to the comments submitted and/or the closure plan. She has been very responsive in this process. And on the subject of dams, we continue to work on reviewing information provided by Bucksport Mill LLC on the dams. The next step in this process is a site visit involving Bucksport Mill LLC, the DEP, the Attorney General's Office, representatives from the impacted communities, as well as Bucksport Generation and Main Water. We continue to work on potential agreements with Bucksport Generation and Main Water in the event that the town chooses to move forward with ownership of the Silver Lake Dam. Dispatcher Amy Reynolds retired from the Bucksport Public Safety Department after ten years on June 2nd. She has agreed to continue in a reserved capacity if necessary. Amy worked overnights her entire career in Bucksport and did a great job. We wish her well in retirement and thank her for her decade of service with the town of Bucksport. And finally, the Tim Emery Pool has been painted and is currently in the process of being filled with the opening day scheduled for June 16th. Now, if we can just get the weather to cooperate, we should have another great summer with lots of people utilizing this great community asset.
Thank you, Sue. Any questions or comments? Just a comment. I would like to acknowledge, as the town manager did, what was submitted to the DEP, not only by Sue, but also the group of concerned citizens regarding the closure plan at the landfill. I remarked to Sue earlier today that between her work and the work of this group, I think Bucksport is pretty well positioned on that front. So I do want to highlight to some of you here this evening, and I want to thank you Discussion of items not on the agenda for the council and public. We will start with
I was hoping my colleague and friend Katrina would beat me up here. She'll, she'll get here, I'm sure. You have, I think, the, some of the hard copy and the email that was sent out. It's been a long haul from November of two and a half years ago to when Aim said that the town of Bucksport, in an email to DEP, will be taking ownership.
Don't worry.
Taking some ownership. And, and, and from there, from there, a lot has happened. From there, a lot has happened. Obviously, the, we all got on the same page. The administration of the town, through the town manager, to the town government, being you folks, and to the citizens of Bucksport got on the same page. Couple of bumps along the way, but I think we did a, we did a pretty good job of getting on this fast and making a very strong statement to, to Aim and to the state as a whole that we've done our part, and the landfill needs to be closed. They attempted to sell it during all that time. I think through good work, that didn't happen. And so we're pleased that everybody has come together, and hopefully we're on the right path. We're not done. This thing, we have a responsibility, I believe, to close this thing well. Right now, there's, what, what Aim's proposal is, is to do, while they say it, one of their, their goals is to reduce environmental impacts, to minimize, that's not what this thing says. That's not what this thing does. This thing is a minimalistic attempt to fiscally get it over with and done. It's what it appears to us when we really looked at it. A big key for this thing is to cap this thing well. If you don't cap it well, Bucksport's legacy will be to continue to pour unneeded toxic waste into the Penobscot River and into local groundwater and whatever that means, whichever direction it means. So one of the keys, we believe, is capping the thing well. And we believe that good technology should be used. What they want to do is use the good technology up here, but nothing on, down here. And Aim can afford to do it right. They can afford to do it right. And so I hope that, that we all stay together and push that as, as something that's vitally important. What, what's coming out of there, who knows, is what's coming out of there. We know there's toxic waste coming straight piped down into the river. We know that there's PFAS and forever chemicals that are going in. God else, they discover new stuff all the time. So to minimize that, it's got to be covered well. And I think we spent some time in there showing how it could be minimized with a good, good cover of Geo membrane and Geo net. We just want to throw some dirt on it at this point and call it good. So I want to thank everybody for doing this, but I want, I think we need to stay diligent as, as a town. And this thing needs to be closed, and it needs to be closed permanently. There has been one instance that we know about of a landfill that has been opened up. So I think, Sue, you know a lot about this, and I think you led us in the proper direction of a deeded restriction. We, we've asked that in, in our thing. And so we thank you for your time. Hope you've read it, or will read it, and appreciate it.
There we go. Anyone else?
My name's Katrina Bishimer, and I live out on Town Farm Road. So I wanted to first begin by saying thank you to all the town councillors, to the mayor, to the town manager, for all the work that you've done around the landfill issue. In addition to that, I'd like to thank all of the Bucksport citizens at large that have participated in community forums. If we think back to the whole process of when the mill closed and what we've gone through, the sharing of their ideas and values and a vision for the future of Bucksport. Not all communities are as lucky as what I think Bucksport is to have such an engaged citizenry. It's truly amazing to me. It's what brings me pleasure in living in Bucksport, an important issue for me. It's taken us a long time to get to the point where we have a closure plan. Um, it's taken us a long time to get to the point where we have a closure plan. Um, and so, um, from working with the Buck Sport Citizen Group, um, and coming in and reviewing the plan for multiple hours, my thoughts on it are the most important parts of the closure plan are based on a model that compares the impact of using the Geo membrane and the Geo net and the calculation rates, um, into the landfill to justify a least effective, um, or at least safe, but the most economic way for AIM to, to close the landfill. Uh, land, uh, the Buck Sport LLC landfill bought the mill and the landfill to make a profit, and there is nothing wrong with that. That's the way businesses operate. But, um, it should also be obligated to close the landfill in a manner that minimizes the potential harmful impact, health impacts, on the citizens of Buck Sport as well as to minimize the impact on the environment, especially the Penobscot River and, um, onward. Uh, by not using a Geo membrane or Geo net on the steeper slopes, it will allow significantly more water in and out of the landfill. And in the closure plan, it says zero point zero one percent if they, if they use the Geo net and the Geo membrane. But if they eliminate it on the sides, that infiltration rate goes up to four point four one or four point four six. And it sounds minimal, but it is a four hundred percent increase, and it's significant. Uh, this plan may be within the tolerance of the main DEP, um, of what they quote as five percent, but there's very little wiggle room at that point for, for there to be, to be noncompliant. And I think this is important when we're looking at history. Buck Sport LLC is owned by AIM, which has a dismal track record. We all know that in regards to compliance with any of the main DEP regu-, um, recommendations since, since they bought it. They have just, you know, thumbed the D, main DEP and not done what they should. The plan does not allow any funding structure should it need remediation for any reason. There is a new Maine state law that will require testing of leachate for PFAs starting in the fall of twenty twenty-five. And once the landfill is capped, the concentration of pollutants, including the PFAs, is likely to increase. And so, um, it is, would be really good if we require some sort of, um, bond for remediation, um, because it's likely that they're gonna require that, at least for the PFAs. And I also wanna emphasize that we're currently and into the future, even with this plan, going to be pumping, so far we know, un, untreated leachate into the Penobscot River. And even though it's acceptable according to Maine law, it's, just seems not good for the environment, period. Um, therefore, I feel like it's a really important to get this done in the best possible standard the first time to minimize the risk of needing the remediation and potentially the town and AIM having conflicts. Um, and they should be required to put up a bond specifically for the, for that purpose. In addition, um, I feel like there should be a deed restriction preventing the mill from ever being reopened just because of the history of this particular mill. We know all sorts of toxic stuff have been thrown in there. And so that's my hope. I, I'm so happy that, uh, the council and the town has kind of come together around this issue and that we have been allowed to participate. And, um, I very much appreciate everything I've all done. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't mean to put you on the spot. If you, do you have anything you wanna add to that, or?
Uh, just that, um, I would concur with the groups, uh, and some, when we first got the plan and, and before we read it, there were certain things that were the most important, which is treatment of leachate and a cap that is, um, a permanent cap. There, I mean, there are other things that I listed in mine, and, and in discussing the need for a Geo textile and the net thing, my concern is this four-point, uh, one or four percent. And the five is, this, that's a very slim margin, number one. And number two, their discussion of nineteen ninety-seven closure techniques takes in, does not take into account in any way, shape, or form the impact of climate change and the increased amount of rainfall that, you know, these main DEP standards currently only consider, uh, twenty-five-year flood. Every major rain event we've had in the past several years has been a minimum of a hundred-year flood. Four inches of rain in three or four hours, and we have seen that. It turned Central Street into a river and the, and all of that. And if you use earth to cap on the steepest slope as that with the intensity of that, it will fail. It will look just like any other large bit of dirt or steep slope does after a very heavy rainfall, which it will have ravines. And so, in my discussions with them, I introduced that element as something that they should consider in looking at, as to why this hybrid they want to do, which is good and poor, uh, would be unsuccessful. And the second item, it relates to leachate. And their, their approach in that is sort of leave it as it is, and if something happens then, and, and that is a reactive way of dealing with, um, the topic. And reactive means something bad has already happened before you started to do it. So in conjunction with the fact that leachate was always treated when the mill was there, by secondary treatment system, and that waiting till it, something fails to do was for, I, I've argued strenuously for secondary treatment of leachate to reduce. In addition to the fact that we introduced information from Maine Maritime Academy and the University of Rhode Island, which shows that the presence of, of PFAS off that outlet near Buck Sport Generation is the highest level of PFAS next to all time. So, we've, I would like to think that between what the town has submitted in terms of requests, they're basically, I, I mean, some other things that, um, active gas extraction as opposed to passive turning it into a birthday cake, you know, just having passive layers that have a, an igniter that light them off every five seconds. And, and I do know how these work. When we, I was in Hampden and Pine Tree was closing, they started off with the birthday cake method. And what happens in the five seconds between things burning is off-site odors happen, uh, move off. And right now, odors aren't an issue with it because it's pretty much an open wound. Best way I can describe it in terms of it doesn't have it, but when you concentrate the gas, it will become more of an issue. Right now, the bond that they have for closure is insufficient to cover the closure itself and, and not the thirty years post-closure. In Maine law, it's a minimum of thirty years post-closure that's required, and it can be extended if things happen done. And the request to have PFAS added as a testing item in all of it is also part of what the town submitted. So, um, as I said in my earlier remarks, I, I truly appreciate the work that, um, the community group has done. I am encouraged by the seriousness that staff appears to be taking, information that's being submitted and, um, will continue to work forward in this process to get those, the, the cap and the leachate, to me, are non-negotiable in the closure. And so, um, the town will argue, I don't wanna say argue, will strongly encourage, uh, the department. I think we've provided them with a lot of information that should assist them in this process.
Thank you. I don't wanna shut anybody off. Anyone else from the public?
No, go ahead.
I've just got one last thing on the budget. This is my sixth year on, going through the budget process, and as Mayor said earlier, it hardly ever happens that you bring something back into the budget. And I don't believe it's happened, like this is my first budget that that's happened. And it is because the department heads were trying to go above and beyond and calling, well, this is not a necessity, this is a luxury, and we were looking at it, that is not a luxury. It needs to be there to do your job efficiently. But I also wanna thank us, this council, 'cause we did a great job working together. We butted heads a lot. We argued, I guess we could say that. No fists were thrown, but we did argue. But we got through it, and we were, at the end of each argument discussion, we moved on to the next one. I didn't see any carryover. Nobody keyed each other's cars on the park. It went pretty well.
This is a civil council, and I, I will tell you that unless you've been somewhere else, you can't appreciate how, how important it is to have people of very diverse opinions on a council. We've got that, but they're able to make their arguments without making personal attacks, and they're able to characterize things as different instead of bad and good. And it, it results in a lot better policies, a lot better, um, face for the community. If we look like we're in a dogfight all the time, it's not a, a well-run organization and.
We're able to come to a good, sensible agreement at the end.
Well, it, it compromises part of the world, and, and this council. There's winners and winners, or everybody loses. That is the reality. It, when there's winners and losers, there's a pendulum that the next time there's an opportunity, it just goes just as hard in the other direction. So finding the middle is generally, and they, they, I've been here ten years, and the councils have generally been characterized by the ability to have hard discussions in a civil without needing to beat each other up personally, which happens in a lot of places, so.
But I just wanted to thank all of you.
There, you guys are awesome. And good.
Councilor Reck.
You folks are awesome.
I, I just have a very low-tech thing to ooze out of tonight in, and I miss the Buck Sport Enterprise, and I'll tell you why. This, uh, this past Tuesday, we had the RSU twenty-five budget, uh, validation vote. There, there was no notice in a local newspaper that this, the polls opened at seven in the morning, closed at eight at night. And, um, the RSU total budget for all four towns this year is nineteen million nine hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars, just under twenty million dollars. And as you may, on the board tonight, uh, Buck Sport's share is gonna be five point six 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 million dollars. And you know how many people voted Tuesday? From seven to eight, ninety-nine people. It was, and, and a little bit of feedback that I've gotten is we all got these things in the mail, and we put them aside, or some go in the recycle bin or whatever. But there was no Buck Sport Enterprise to say, hey, remember to vote this week. It's important. So, anyway, as I started, I miss the Buck Sport Enterprise.
For anyone that's thinking about starting a newspaper in the area, there's your in right there.
Uh, just very briefly, um, I, to follow up on what Councilor Reckin said, I do wanna thank the council as well, uh, for their efforts on this budget. I know every year we get to January, and I announce how budget season is my favorite season, and I get the odd looks, um, but it is.
Still do.
Yeah, I get the odd looks anyway, but right, uh, on that subject, um, especially, but, um, it is because I believe till the end of days that budgets reflect priorities when they're done well, anyway. Um, and I think, um, this budget was done, if you don't mind my saying so, very well, um, by this group. And I will second what the town manager said. It's really nice to work with a group of people who are able to look at things, um, differently, but all have the, they all wanna get to that same destination of making Buck Sport as, uh, as good as it can be today and, and for the days when we're no longer here. So, anyway, thank you all. Appreciate the efforts this year. Far more boring note, we have, uh, I wanna make sure we don't need any committee meetings before our meeting, um, on June the twenty-sixth. All right. Well, if there is nothing else, Chair Lintana motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?